I was
Not sure what, I'm not sure what happened.
Uh, I was, uh, so I was saying, uh, I never challenged it before. Uh, I was actually doing on my own, on my own part, uh, uh, the P, the, the PE test.
Okay.
Uh, but since I don't have any college hours, uh, I had to do the Texas pack one. Uh, so I just, it just became too much studying, cause this, it's the same concept, but it's different. Um, so I was like, you know what, I'm just gonna get, I'm just gonna guess, try to get certified in one subject only, and then from there work my way to the PE test.
Okay, um, so, but you looked at the, you looked at the PE pack test?
Yeah, I actually was studying for, uh, they're through the, through the Texas, uh, the one we have there, the book, the yellow one. I had bought it, I had bought it on my own, uh, and I was doing it for a while. I challenged it, I got, I got, I got a two thirty my first try.
Uh, because some people the, that watch my PE videos, cause there's a playlist of PE videos. Uh, they, even though they're, it, it's a, for the Texas PE EC through twelve, it's been very helpful to people taking the pact as well. So you might wanna take a look at it and not give up, cause I think you can do it, but, uh, so, hold on one second, it's Miss Garza. Hi, Miss Garza, I'm with a student right now, can I call you back? Okay, wait. Okay, um, so you're doing core four through eight now?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna stick to one subject and then, uh, work. I might eventually work my way to getting certified in PP also, but.
Cause core four through eight is actually four subjects.
No, I'm doing social studies four through eight.
Ah, social studies four three, okay, that's a horse of a different color, I bet. So, so, okay, so here's social studies four three, perfect. So, um, what's really important for you to study for the social studies is going to be the, the teaks. Under, no, understanding the teaks, um, that are associated with yours, very, very important. This is science. Okay, so here we are, social studies, and you are gonna have to access elementary and middle school. So, from fourth grade to sixth grade, now, what I want for you to do as part of your studying, and if you've watched the videos, you'll, you'll have seen me say this already. But is to do a deep dive, a, a, a very close note-taking, uh, analyzation, if you will, of your teaks by grade level, and, and using the, your standards as a guide, um. Taking your notes on this, so print out this page with your standards. This is like the bible to social studies four through eight, it's what you need to know and what you need to be able to do with your students in the classroom concerning social studies. And so here you have the overarching categories, and it makes mention of the teaks right here in standard three, but then it goes into specific detail.
Yeah, history.
The econom, that, excuse me, geography, economics, government, citizenship, culture, science, technology, and society, so you'll see those same categories, um, repeated in each grade level.
Level.
See, twelve, right? So as you study this, Marcos, go through and just, you don't have to be a scholar on, you know, the American Indians that lived on the plains, or the ple- puebloan Indians, but you do need to have a working knowledge of them, to have some point of reference. And I tried to collect as many as possible in the playlist for, uh, social studies four through eight. Because a lot of it is going to be just you reviewing the knowledge, much of it is, um, four through eight. The exam is heavy on the stuff that the students need to know, right, the teaks, and the fourth grade teaks and the seventh grade teaks are all about Texas, like a hundred percent about Texas. Fourth grade, social studies is like Texas history light, and seventh grade is Texas history dark. Um, and so you, you ha- you can't get away from knowing like the specifics about Texas history and studying that stuff before you go in to take your exam. And so here I have like a short video, if you, you've probably seen this, but then, these here are good, um, reviews for you, and, and I would be taking notes on your standards as you, as you go through these videos and review those concepts, um.
So each one of those videos, are you only watch the first one, the, the, the teaks one? So all these videos break down each category, like you ran our history, it brings on all work, what pertains to history first?
A lot of it, um, it does, so this is a feature on the Texas Revolution, and this one is about the different regions of Texas, and this one is about Alamo. And so I, if you'll look at these, and this is fourth grade, remember, I said fourth grade was Texas history light, so you'll see. Fourth grade students examine the history of Texas, early beginnings of pre- presence in North America. Historical content focuses on Texas history, including the Texas Revolution, the establishment of the Republic of Texas, so all of this, I would go through and get those, those, um, or use the back page of your standards and take your notes and do fourth grade and write the different areas, it's mostly about this with a special focus on this, and these people, and these skills. And then take a look at how that differs from fifth, from fifth grade, right? Fifth grade, if you'll look at it, I think is the beginning of like world history, if I'm not mistaken. Ah, no, US history, fifth grade is US history light, right? Sixth grade is world history light. Um, and we'll go to that, we'll go, uh, sixth grade, we have to go access sixth grade in middle school. So here, study people, places, societies in the contemporary world, so sixth grade is world history light. Um, fifth grade, US history light, but there are content, there's, there's, uh, names, dates, events in each of those areas that you just have to know about, and that's what those videos are over, over those like big overarching, like the Texas Revolution, like, you know, uh, some other things, what would they, what would be something important for world history, um. Different levels of economic development for various societies, using indications of like life expectancy, like just looking, is America really America the great, or are there other, you know, societies where people don't die when they're at elementary, you know, like, are there better societies, is there another way of measuring like progress? As, as, uh, you know, his, there is the GDP, the, the gross domestic product, but does that really mean anything if your life expectancy is really, really bad, and you might die while going grocery shopping? So like, sort of talking about those different things, um, with your students. Different cultures. They need to be able to differentiate between locate and use primary and valid, primary and secondary sources, such as oral, print, and visual material, so across different cultures, we need for them to be able to not only identify the difference between primary and secondary sources, but finding valid ones, right, not just like, oh, a primary source, and it's this guy who knows nothing, and that's not a really good primary source for me.
Yeah.
Yeah, so getting them to understand like what it means in order to be a valid primary or a valid secondary source, and, um. So that's how I would study for this, Mr. Martinez, um, going forward for you, if you look at seventh grade, you see seventh grade is US, I mean, excuse me, Texas history, but like, the real deal, the, the more in-depth, see it, content is presented with more depth. We're going deeper and we're going wider than we did in fourth grade, and, and the reason is because you're, they're more mature, right? We're not gonna start off in fourth grade saying, yeah, the Texans came in and we just massacred everybody that used to be here, and the Mexicans were here, and the Indians were here, and we just like, none of that is gonna be discussed. It's going to be, and, and, yeah, and different, uh, we're gonna talk about uh, different things that are more appropriate for them cognitively and maturity-wise, go a little bit deeper into some of the, some of the same content that, you know, we discussed before. Before, it was more about the Indians and what life was like before the settlers. Now we're talking in specifics, going into like the Mexican national era and how it helped shape Texas. Um, how Mexico helped shape Texas in many ways. The contrast between Spanish, Mexican, and Anglo purposes for and methods of the settlement of Texas, like being able to understand like the different reasons why they wanted to settle here, Mexicans, cause we were already here, Spanish, cause they want what the Mexicans have, and, um, the Anglos, because it was the brave new world, and we had a lot of space, a lot of resources. Um, proximity to like the ocean and just a lot, a lot here in Texas, so. I would go through here and any of these that you didn't, like, I don't know this. The Freedonian Rebellion, I don't know it, but if I was studying this, I would very quickly come and either put it in YouTube or Google and really quickly have somebody who does know in two minutes or less, tell me what, no, no ma'am. Freedonian Rebellion, vamos a ver. Hayden Edwards. He was granted an impresario ship near Stephen F. Austin's colony. If they couldn't show proof they were working the land. This led to a conflict, and they should have had to show proof, yes, you have to show proof you're doing something with the land and not just sitting on it. So it was a conflict between settlers. During a disputed election, Mexican authorities felt Hayden Edwards was corrupt, favoring the new settlers. The Mexican authorities then revoked his impresario ship, probably did not like that. Settlers from nearby town marched in and arrested Edwards, Mexico realized there were big problems and dispatched the military. Probably not a good idea. So you've invested fifty thousand. Hayden declared his colony independent from Mexico. The Freedonian flag was white and red, because Edwards wanted the Cherokee to join. After six weeks, a Mexican army arrives, even if Arsene was joined with the Mexican army. Hayden Edwards ran to the US to get help, he left his brother Benjamin in command, Benjamin ran away when he realized no help was coming. Thus, I was just gonna say thus ended the big, the big. Uh, okay, the, the big rebellion, so, and that's why we really don't know about it, cause it was like very short-lived and not, not very effective.
Yeah, I never heard of this one, maybe when I was in school.
And so. Yeah, it's important to go through the teaks and make sure any ones you don't know, that you look at it and that you write a note down, so now just write Freedonian, it's Hayden Edwards, when he got all upset, that people wanted accountability, hey dude, we gave you an impresario ship, you have this land to build and, and make better for other people, and, and you're not doing it, so you either have to put up or shut up, is what really happened, and then he didn't like that, he was gonna make his own place, and then he ran, and, and then it went away, um, but they did take the land back, because he wasn't doing, you know, he, he lost that impresario ship. So that's how I would study, um, Mister Martinez, sorry, I have to check my, I have a person coming in in a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sorry, because I didn't have service.
No, no, not at all, don't. Alright. So, um, let me go to yours, and let, let's just see. I, I did not know that there was a practice exam now available for the science seven through twelve, but now I'm like, are there other ones also, let me see, that would be wonderful, I think there should be for each and every one of them. But of course, there isn't for each and every one of them just yet, but, um, this is where you go to, to sign up and, um, to prepare, could see the exam framework. They covered all the standards. Social studies, that content is gonna be the biggest, and that's just your teaks, right? The history of it, the history of Texas history, the United States and the world, remember, we looked through like fourth grade, Texas history light. And then US history light, and then world history light, and then so on and so forth, um. Common characteristics of communities past and present, you're not gonna know how to, this does nothing to help you study, look. Common characteristics, applies chronology. Knowing what exactly to know, you're gonna have to come to the teaks to get that specialized, to be able to get a review of particulars, like, like the, uh, Freedonian Rebellion, or the Turtle Bayou Resolution, see, has another one, I don't know. Turtle Bayou Resolutions, and this took place you know, in, in, in the Texas history, and I grew up in Texas, apparently.
Their website, what's their website called to, to go to the teaks, like the one you are, are in right now?
Okay, so I am going to send you. Remember, from this one, you're gonna have to go to both elementary and to middle school, right, cause your certification area is four through eight, right? So I'm just gonna take this in here, and look at your name, Marcos.
It's, it's also, it's, it's also Martinez, but I always.
Oh, there it is. I am going, do you want me to email it to you or text it?
Oh, you could email it to me, it's fine, I'll check it right now.
Alrighty, and, and, um. You have access to this too, right, like the, everything?
Yes, there, yeah, I actually, I actually rewrote all the standards on, on note cards, that way I could have them with me, sort of going back and forth.
Absolutely, wonderful, that's excellent, now do the same thing, but for the teaks, right, and you can either do it do, I would do it by grade level, like, this is my fourth grade one, this is all the, the, the facts and people, places, things you need to know.
And how would you, would you just summarize the whole teaks in one note card, or just write several cards of certain things, or?
Yeah, I would, uh, summarize like what it's mostly about, that like you already know very quickly, fourth grade is Texas history live.
History.
Beginnings, right, but, um, more importantly, and then I would go by the categories, so go by history, then go by geography, then go by economics, in each one of those, and see like what in that area do they need to know, what in that area do they need to, for each of them, yeah.
So I bring it, I use the standards to break, to break down the teaks.
Absolutely, that's perfectly right, yes. That's right, wait, I went to court again, she was.
And I, I still gotta complete the two forty two in, right, I still gotta do that one. The, the one that.
Do you think that it's helping you?
I never, I, because she, she just sent it to me just today.
Okay.
Actually, the two forty two ring.
Okay, well, I mean, it's a lot, try it, because it, it is good practice, and it does bring up some of the stuff, like you might see Freedonians Rebellion in there, and now you know what it's about. Um, but, so it might be good to practice in the content, but it, it's not a substitution for analyzing the teaks and, and really knowing like, okay, this is what a seventh grader is appropriate for a seventh grader, this is appropriate for a fifth grader in, um, in social studies.
Do you recommend me just to study the, like, the, the book, then, the teaks? The Texas, the one that you have there, the, the yellow one?
Yes, and you can look, like, you can use this to help you study, because this is like, this book, all it is, is like Google, but just for so- social studies four through eight, right, it's gonna have everything that's already in the teaks. It's there, so yes, I would.
Altogether.
Certainly, altogether, exactly, altogether. The only thing that is not here are the skills, so like, this is all the content knowledge, but on your teaks, they have things they have to be able to do, like, they have to be able to compare and contrast migration patterns, you know, for different reasons, for, um, you know, economic, um, civil unrest, whatever. So, there are particular things that they need to be able to do, and, uh, those are going to be, you know, compare places and regions of the United States in terms of physical and human characteristics, like that's that's something that they need to be able to do, I, you're gonna have to make sure you know how to do that as well. Explain the economic, political, and social problems during the reconstruction, I would stick with the MoMetrix as your main source of study for right now.
Cause I know they told me that I had to complete the two forty touring, so I was like, oh, I don't know, so then I'm confused. So I don't know, is this, is this another source that I, to study?
It is another really good source that you can use to study, and it's online, and it already like brings it up for you, and I think it asks you questions and quizzes you after.
And you answer them, it gives you like a little like, like question quiz for each, for each section.
So it's up to you, it's up to you, if, um, but I would make use of every resource.
I, I like to, I actually already print out the, the MoMetrix, the, the whole thing, cause I like, I prefer studying. I prefer studying in, in hard copies and over like through.
Yeah, so do I, I prefer a hard copy as well, so yeah, I would definitely make your notes here, um, and, 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 you know, use the MoMetrix to fill in your knowledge with the stuff that they need to know and need to be able to do. And then whenever you're ready, if you're, if you feel ready for it, just let me know, and I can sort of, I can get them to override the your requirement at two forty tutoring, if you feel prepared for the exam.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna try to do this first, like the hard copy, cause I like, I work better on hard copies and taking those. Uh, I, I feel that I like get the hang of it, and it becomes easier, like, cause I have some knowledge of history. And when I was in school, I loved history, uh, so, just like a little, like a little memory coming back. Uh, I refresh.
Absolutely, you're just sweeping out the pathways in your neurological, uh.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing is, I have to be the teacher now instead of the student, so I had to pretend like, you know, that's the only hard part of, of, of this one now, studying.
Yeah, you'll get it, you'll get it, and also, I have, um, you know, office hours every Tuesday and Thursday from nine to eleven, using the same link, so if you ever have any questions, or you wanna talk about a certain section, or how you might, you know, present something or create activities concerning a particular concept, just let me know, pop in and, and we can talk about it.
Yeah, I, I had to take the day off, well, half a day, cause, uh, to, 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 to.
To meet with me, I'm so sorry, yes, absolutely.
Cause I work at a school already, I'm a, I'm a maid at a school.
Okay, excellent.
Uh, so, it was, it was kinda hard for me to like do Zooms in the morning.
Yeah, I get it, I get it, um, so, so I would say, continue doing what you're doing. Um, you, you're on the right track, having printed out the MoMetrix. Um, you don't need to have these things memorized, you just have to have a working knowledge to where you would be able to identify what, what is correct.
Yeah.
Don't need to be memorized on a crazy level, but you need to be able to talk about like, well, these are the economic and political problems during reconstruction that affected different groups, you know, you need to be able to have that conversation if the students need to be able to do that.
Yes, so yeah, that, that's the only hard part of, you gotta be the teacher while studying.
Yes, absolutely.
And I wish I had, I mean, cause when I first started doing this, I didn't, I, I, I don't think I never, no, I never met with you, never, my first time.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that.
So they didn't really explain to me, they just like do two, two forty touring, and then I did it, I did it, and I and I was doing, that time I was doing reading, cause I was like, well, I could relate to reading, I, you know, I like reading too. But that was really hard, that one, it was kinda hard, cause I, no one told me to, uh, break down the teaks and study the standards, I was just.
Probably can still do reading if you want to also, so like, whatever.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with history, I wanna focus on one, cause I was really focused on PE, cause I do have a job, I mean, if I do pass it, right? I do have a job, even for this one too, that's why I'm trying to like, not rush, but like, you know, like, uh, get certified soon.
Absolutely.
Cause, I mean, I, because it's easier to when you work at a school, cause you know a lot of people, so you get hired as quickly compared to people versus outside of the school. And, and I coach, I also coach at a middle school too.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, and I really don't wanna lose my, my stipends, so that's why I'm.
Absolutely, no, absolutely not, so, um, do the review of this stuff, and I think that you'll be, I think that you'll be good the next time.
Yeah, when, I, I guess for me in the reading part, when I was, I wasn't really like that focused, cause I, now that I understand what I had to do now, cause in the reading part, I was like, oh, here it is, and just study, and that's it, and I, I never like, they, like, they never showed me how to do the teaks and stuff like that. Like what you're showing me right now.
Okay.
So now I got a better glance of what I had to do and what I had to like prepare myself to do.
Right. And you'll be using the teaks very often throughout your teaching career, just remember, this is, this is, the students are, they're gonna be assessed on each one of these teaks, that like, they're gonna be assessed, oh, and that's what I was gonna tell you, oh my god, I can't believe I forgot to say.
And I'm familiar with fourth grade, cause I do fourth and fifth, so I know most, like, I know most of my notes, uh, the fourth, the, the fourth, the fourth grade and fifth grade.
So a really good research also is your star release tests for.
The, it's only eighth grade, yeah, eighth grade's only tested subject, uh, seventh through above is not tested.
Yeah, they, they used to do seventh grade, they don't do it anymore.
It's only, it's only, it's only eighth grades are tested ones, it's a tested area.
Right, and, and so, oh, sorry, this is not the one I need to look at, so that's where you have the, the answer key, but here, it's just good, because it gives you the same stuff that they, you need to know, you know what I mean, it's like that.
I, yeah, I actually, look, that question, I, I was doing practice tests, like those ten questions when they give it, and that one actually came out. If I'm mistaken, it was that one, yeah, it was that one. That's the, the territory.
This is a good gauge of what you know, because eighth grade is the highest level in your certification area, right, four through eight. So this is a good assessment, and there are several release tests, so I would download these and make sure that you know this stuff, if you know this stuff, you are gonna pass the test.
And, and when do I, when, until what day or timeframe do I have to sign up for the test?
I believe they want you to do it like in a month, so what I would do is choose your date, sign up for your date, and, and, you know, put it at like three weeks out, you know, give yourself.
I was planning to, because I don't get paid to the fifteen, so I was doing like, ah, I'll get the fifteen, and then from there, I'll put like, three weeks from there.
Perfect, that's perfect, and then to, and, and between then and now, don't do it all like, oh, like a chicken with your head cut off. Start with one, I'm gonna start with Texas history, and I'm gonna do it knowing what I need to know in the fourth grade, and then I'm gonna go deeper dive and what I need to know in the seventh.
Exactly where I'm gonna start out first, the fourth grade, fourth, and then work my way, once I ma- not master it, but.
Yeah, but master it, like, yeah, once you get a confidence in that one.
Next grade.
Yes, sir, that's the way to do it.
Yeah, I've, it's been helpful, cause I've been trying, like we said, chicken by the head for the past, I don't know how many, like, uh, past year, trying to figure it out.
Right.
My home.
I'm so sorry about that, and I'm glad that I'm gonna help you now.
It's probably my fault too, cause I didn't put in that much effort, I did, but not really, cause it was kinda hard to, to study.
Yeah, and then everybody has their own lives, and stay on top of it, and you know what, also I find a lot of students sometimes put it off, because it's gives you answers, you know what I mean, it's, it's a stressful thing, and so it's like, oh, I don't wanna talk to that lady and try to, you know, like, sometimes you can get actually anxiety.
I'm always like a, it's like, I'm always a student of the game, uh, I'm always, I'm always, I'm, I'm always trying to learn. The more, the more I learn, the more I be, uh, the better I do.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even right now, as, as.
Always learning.
Even right now as a coach, right now, I was, this is my fourth year coaching, so I'm still learning, I'm still learning, so I'm always gonna be learning, so.
Me too, I, I'm always learning, every day. I am always learning, every day. I just learned about Freedonians Rebellion.
Yeah, so I guess me, I'm, my mentality always, the more you learn, I mean, the more people that know this stuff is better. The more you learn is, the better, so I'm, I'm always love for people helping me.
Okay, excellent. So here are, I added to uh, star release tests in there. In the uh, folder, so if you wanna go in there to practice those, they're from different grade, I mean, years. Um, and like if you wanna do more, you could certainly do, do more even, like there's, there's a lot more available, actually. Let's see, one, two, three, four. Eight years.
Yeah, that's a lot.
And it even gives you like, these, if you wanna look at this, um, it gives you like a better rationale, you know, I'm gonna put that one in there too. Okay, and I think I need one more. Alright, I. Okay, I have someone coming in, in ten minutes. I'm gonna have to, do you have any more questions for me?
No, I, I'm good, I, that's, I just wanted to have, like, get like a, like a. Brief what I had to really focus on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause right, right now I was trying to like figure out, like, well, I don't know what to do, I don't, I don't, just study straight out, the whole book. I've done it before, but other than, I don't know what I'm studying, what I have to look at or what I have to follow. But now that I have a more uh, sense of what I have to do, so now I'm just gonna follow that for each grade level.
Absolutely.
And I, do I, I email you whenever like, I said, I registered for the test. Okay, I'm gonna try to do, try to find practice exams that I could buy or if there's any available out there. Before, and I'll, if I do, I'll email the scores to see where, where I'm at.
Yeah, absolutely, for sure do that. And also, please use the starts release test, because they're for free and they're gonna be. You know, already know, they're gonna be covering everything that's in the teaks, because it literally is. An assessment of everything that is teak, so it'll all be there.
Alright, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You have a beautiful rest of your day.
Yes, likewise.